But when I can sponge the.
Is Mr. Baker here?
Um, yeah, I think I've recorded me. And then I'm off.
I, I sent you to.
Do that, man. Look at it.
No, no, I thought you were waving.
Tom's not here.
All right, folks, welcome to the Zine City Council meeting. And to start off our meeting tonight, our Vice President Wes Smith is going to open us with prayer. And then Councilwoman Rebecca Dean will lead us in pledge allegiance and then we'll call our meeting to order. Let's please stand for prayer time.
All right, get on, bow your heads. Heavenly Father, thank you for the sunshine that we have today, the wonderful weather. We are so blessed in our community to look up and we are just in awe of your presence. Thank you for your blessings that you bestow upon our city. Thank you for those first responders, our police, our firefighters that put their lives on the line, literally every minute of every day, just for our safety. We thank you for that, dear Lord. As a community, we are so thankful for the citizens that care about our community, those that are watching tonight, those that are here in person. Give us wisdom tonight, as always with our, our city officials, our elected officials and our county officials, that we make the best decisions in the best interests of our citizens. Continue to bless our community. Help us financially. We know our country is hurting. We know things are tough. We know a lot of people are not work. But every day we wake up with fresh water, ability to, to purchase food and, and a roof over our head, and that's, makes us very rich. These things we ask in your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
You face the flag. Please, Councilman Dean.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. All right, let's call our meeting to order. Roll call.
Vice President Smith.
Here.
Councilwoman Scrivens.
Here.
Councilwoman Dean.
Here.
Councilwoman Branham.
Here.
Councilman Dean.
Here.
Mayor Mays.
Here.
President Urschel.
Here. Next item on agenda is approval of minutes for February ninth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
By the mayor? Second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Dean. Thank you so much. Any comments from anyone on these? All right, no comments. Let's call the roll.
Vice President Smith.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scrivens.
Yes.
Councilwoman Dean.
Hi.
Councilwoman Branham.
Hi.
Councilman Dean.
Hi.
Mayor Mays.
Hi.
President Urschel.
Uh, Epstein? I was not present. Motion passes. Next is the minutes for the February sixteenth, twenty twenty-three council special meeting. Do I have a motion for approval? Moved by the mayor. Do I have a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
Second by Councilman Branham. Thank you. Any comments on that? Let's do the roll call.
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Scrivens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Hi.
Councilwoman Branham.
Aye.
Councilman Dean.
Hi.
Mayor Mays.
Hi.
President Urschel.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. No special presentations tonight. Audience comments. We now have an opportunity for the audience to come and speak to the city council. We just asked that when you come, if you'd please come to the podium, give your name and your address and limit your conversations to three to five minutes.
Good evening. My name's Cindy Vernon, two seventy-seven Purcell, Zine, Ohio. Been a resident of Zine probably for over forty years. And I felt like it was important to speak to the meeting. I was here two weeks ago and a very articulate presentation was given by a businesswoman who just opened a business in Zine and expressed some concerns about some of the issues that we have as well as other cities. But in addition to those concerns, one of the things that's important to me and that I like about Zine is we do need businesses, but we need to take care of people less fortunate than we are. My church contributes and participates in, and I don't speak for them, so I'm not going to say their name, but One Bistro, IHN, The Domestic Violence Project, and Bridges of Hope. I know there are problems and there are issues, but I feel as if there are a lot of positives that come about as a result of that. And the Bible talks about how we treat the least of our brethren. And it is one of the things I like about Zine is that we do attempt to do that. And that's not to diminish the businesswoman's concerns because she's entitled to have a business and have people not harass or create problems. So, thank you very much.
Great. Thanks for this lovely show. Would anyone else like to address the council this time? Did we receive any, any email?
No, sir.
Okay, great. Okay. Anything you guys want to bring up tonight?
No, we didn't.
Okay, great. Thanks, thanks for being here. Yep, okay, great. That'll be the end of audience comments. Next item is to go over old business. First item on old business is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh three, extending the moratorium on addiction treatment facilities established by ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirty-one for an additional three months. This was introduced at the last meeting by Councilwoman Dean. Mr. City Manager, any, any additional comments on that before we have the public hearing?
I don't think so. As I had suggested previously to council, between our law director, our city planner, my office, we've invested quite a bit of time in evaluating this and really are trying to take a comprehensive approach in bringing back legislation to address concerns. I discussed with council president, vice president before the meeting tonight that we do think there's important material to cover here, perhaps even suggesting a special session of the entire council to review this before we would introduce it. So we'll be incorporating that into some future planning for meetings. But we should be able to, within this extended timeline, refine these final recommendations, bring them back to them to council and then introduce legislation to hopefully implement accordingly.
Great. All right, thank you so much. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. And I'd like to ask anyone who would be, has any comments in favor of this ordinance to please come to a podium at this time. Anyone opposed to the ordinance or may not have an opinion one way or the other, but has some comments that they would like to make, if you'd please come to the podium at this time? Okay, we're going to close the public hearing. And Councilwoman Dean, would you like to make a motion to approve this ordinance? All right, motion by Councilwoman Dean. Do I have a second for that?
I'll second.
Second by the mayor. Any comments from the council? Great. Let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Scrivens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilwoman Branham.
Aye.
Councilman Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Urschel.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Thank you so much. All right, now we're going to move to new business. The first item on our new business is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh four, approving the sale and conveyance of certain city-owned property at Zine Town Square, parcel B to Dillon LLC. Mr. City Manager, would you give us an introduction on that?
Yes, sir, thank you. As previously, excuse me, as previously discussed with council, staff this evening is presenting the first in what will ultimately be a series of measures for transactional steps to facilitate pretty comprehensive redevelopment at the, what is currently known as Zine Town Square. If approved, ordinance twenty twenty-three oh four would authorize the execution of a purchase and sales agreement with Dillon LLC for their acquisition of a portion of property on the southeast corner of the site here and referred to as Lot One of the Zine Town Square redevelopment project number one. This totals approximately two point three three nine acres and includes an existing thirty-two thousand eight hundred square foot commercial facility. The negotiated price, purchase price is seven hundred, five hundred seventy-five thousand dollars and other considerations. The Dillon Group is planning immediate investments totaling approximately three million dollars to the site. Among other things, this would include upgrading the mechanical systems, refacing the entire exterior of the facility, and rehab to the landscaping, pedestrian access, and parking facilities. Additional tenancy is expected fairly quickly with these improvements and we'll be making some additional announcements regarding changes and anticipated new businesses and services at the site pretty soon. This initial transaction is but the first in a series of steps for the initial phase of redevelopment, as we've discussed with council in quite a bit of detail recently. In the coming weeks, we will be providing additional information on the overall redevelopment plan and publicly sharing what that vision is, what that timeline and phasing looks, looks like. This is a really important aspect for the, the future identity of our downtown. In fact, we think it's really, this marks the first transactional step on sort of improving the entire marketplace downtown. So, very excited about that. Dillon, as a partner and within the context of our, of our plans for the redevelopment, you know, we're looking at several years and tens of millions of dollars of reinvestment. So this is the first domino of many to come and we think the first domino of several transactions this year. But we are recommending introduction this evening for this ordinance so that we might get the process formally underway.
Great. Any comments from council before we ask for the introduction?
Mr. President.
Yes.
Thanks, sir.
Councilman.
Just want the citizens of Zine to know what this XTS Zine Town Square redevelopment plan Phase One is. And this Phase One is going to be the area that houses Buccaneer, Alcapoco, Comfort Dental, and Bar's Hometown Pharmacy. So, that's the area that we're talking about here, when we talk about Lot Number One.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Councilman Scrivens. Any other comments from council?
I think staff, they know this has been, this is a long, long road and staff has been extremely diligent in working on it, so very thankful for all the many hours put into this.
My pleasure. Exciting step. This is our first, first step towards revitalization downtown. Right, so, great. Do I have a, a motion for introduction? So moved by the mayor. Thank you. Next item is Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero zero nine, awarding the bid and authorizing the execution of a contract with A and B Asphalt Corporation for the twenty twenty-three East Market Street ADA Ramp Project. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, sir. The city is being awarded grant funding through the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission to rehabilitate East Market Street from North Detroit Street to North Columbus Avenue. The funding will allow for reconstruction of this entire section of Market Street in calendar year twenty twenty-four. The total project estimate as submitted for grant funding was six hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars. The approved grant funding for the project from the state is up to four hundred and six thousand, seven hundred forty-one dollars, or sixty-four percent of the total, with the city's local match being the balance of two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars. In order to receive the funding and proceed with the roadway construction, however, all associated ADA ramps in this particular stretch of roadway must be in full compliance with federal accessibility standards. As a result, and in order to have the roadway ready for twenty twenty-four, for the construction next year, the city will need to install sixteen ADA compliant ramps in, in calendar year twenty-three. To facilitate this, on Tuesday, February seventh, the city received three bids from qualified contractors to complete the ADA ramp project. The, the bid information was included in your agenda report. A and B Asphalt Corporation, which is a subsidiary of John R. Jerkensen Company, was the lowest bidder. The firm has successfully completed similar projects for us here in Zine as well as other jurisdictions in our region. So we are confident in their abilities. Staff is therefore recommending that council move forward with this contractor through the award of a bid and execution of a contract, as would be authorized by this resolution in the amount as quoted, which I think here is eighty-five thousand, nine hundred eighty-eight dollars and sixty-three cents.
Great. Thank you so much. Any discussion amongst council here before we vote on this measure?
So the stip, Mr. President.
Yes, go ahead.
So, so the stipulation to acquire the grant is to have the ramps in place first?
Correct. And that's a pretty standard with most of these state-funded programs, but the accessibility requirements for the ADA ramps have to be met in advance of the actual reconstruction project.
Thanks, sir. I learn something every day.
Any other discussion? Do I have a motion for approval of the resolution?
Sir, it's your street.
So moved. So moved.
I could vote on this, right?
Councilman Cody beat you to it there. He's made the, the motion. Do I have a second on that motion?
I know.
There, Councilwoman Scrivens has a second there. All right, any, any final comments or discussion from council?
Good, it's a good.
All right, let's call the vote.
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Scrivens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Councilwoman Branham.
Aye.
Councilman Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Urschel.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Thank you so much. All right, next item is Resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh one oh, awarding the bid and authorizing the execution of a contract with J.R. Jerkensen Company for the, for the twenty twenty-three North Detroit Street from Kenzie Road to Church Street Resurfacing Project. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. And before I open with this introduction of this item, I just want to acknowledge each one of these we do tonight represents a ton of work on behalf of our engineering department, on behalf of our law director, to assemble these bid packages, to go through that solicitation process, embedding process, and now award process with the contract. So, it's a ton of work and, and it's also a testament of commitment to seek out these grant resources because they bring tremendous value to, to our community and really maximize what we can invest locally. So, with that being said, in October of two thousand eighteen, the city applied for and subsequently is being awarded grant funding through NBRPC to rehabilitate North Detroit Street from Kenzie Road to Church Street. This is a significant project for our community, as this is a, a, one of our most traveled roadways. The total project cost estimate two thousand eighteen as submitted for grant funding was one point two nine eight million, five hundred five, five hundred fifty-nine, five hundred fifty-nine dollars, that is. That is sixty-nine percent of the project cost that would be covered by grant funds and then thirty-one percent of the, the, of the project would be local match. However, as additional federal monies became available in twenty twenty-two due to the significant increases in construction costs, the city entered into an amended agreement with ODOT that maintained the same funding splits but increased the overall maximum grant amount by ten percent, making the maximum grant amount available nine hundred and eighty-five thousand, six hundred and eight dollars. So additional projects' costs must be borne by the city and if council recall, you committed using some of our federal redistributive funds for that purpose so that we could fulfill our commitment on this project. So again, on Tuesday, February seventh, the city received three bids from qualified contractors to complete this project. The firms in their respective bid amounts were included in your agenda report again. Among these, John R. Jerkensen Company was the lowest bidder. The firm is a well-known provider of services in our community, having done a lot of successful projects for us in the past. We are confident in their ability. With those conditions in mind, staff is recommending the council move forward with this contractor and award a bid through the resolution presented this evening. We would note that also pursuant to the contract documents, work will not commence on this project before May one of this year. That is due to the fact that our staff will be installing a, a stub at the intersection of Country Club and Detroit Street. If you recall, we also have resources coming to the city to replace the water line there under Country Club. So we want to make sure that we are getting that T installed before any surface rehabilitation is started. So we will be starting that work and that will replace that CSU water line that extends under Country Club. So again, recommending the award of the bid in the amount of one point four one zero million and change and ask council approval so we can get this on the docket for this year.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Dean. Do I have a second? Second by Councilwoman Scrivens. Discussion or comments from council members?
Great job. That's a great job, Chris.
Yeah, I just had, Mr. President, that obviously there are not a lot of good alternative routes as a north-south connector in our community. So we will, we will be well out in advance of the actual construction of this to remind the general public of what, you know, what to expect, when to expect things, and do our best to, to provide a maintenance of traffic during this period. But folks really should please be patient. This is a big project. It will be a little bit intrusive and create some inconvenience, but this is a, this is a real good thing to get this roadway fixed, so.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Scrivens.
Uh, Mr. City Manager, is this reconstruction, is this going to be curb-to-curb or just the driveway?
This will be curb-to-curb. They will do some restoration of subsurface at various locations where we've had some undermining of that. But then a, a full surface resurfacing for the entire length from Church Street all the way up to Kenzie and we'll do curb-to-curb.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
So do we know when that is going to proceed? Is that May, June, July? Is that?
Uh, Mr. Engineer, do you have any insight on the schedule?
The school, the school schedule?
It'll be after school. I can, I can assure you of that.
Yeah, like, like City Manager said, it should, the contract document just say you can't start before May the first. They're going to be, there'll be a, a next authorization for Bellbrook, same contractor. So I, what we've been told, at least preliminarily, is that they would be down, getting Bellbrook knocked out first before they would go up to Detroit anyway, their scheduling and all their work. So, you know, obviously, as far as the maintenance of traffic, we don't anticipate having to do any detours because as the city manager said, that is a difficult section to, to detour. Because it, obviously, it's got three lanes, so we don't anticipate we're going to have to, you know, we'll have to shut down, obviously, as we, in sections. But, so, at this point, we don't have an exact date for it to, to start as. But it, it's getting in, when, when you say they can't start before May first, I mean, school lets out typically around now Memorial Day, right?
Yeah, May twenty-seventh.
If there's any intru, we, we, and we can even talk with John R., they, they work with communities all around us. And right there, I don't envision that being a problem. And if it does, for whatever reason, certainly we'll make contact with the school district.
Next one. Any other discussion? All right, let's call the vote.
Excuse me. Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Scrivens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Uh, Councilwoman Branham.
Aye.
Councilman Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Urschel.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item is Resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh one one, awarding the bid and authorizing the execution of a contract with J.R. Jerkensen Company for the twenty twenty-three Bellbrook Avenue from Allison Avenue to Second Street Resurfacing Project. The City Manager.
Thank you, sir. In October of twenty twenty-one, the city applied for and later was informed that a, an award of funding would be coming through the Corona Vise Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriation, the CRRSA. This is grant funding through NBRPC, and this again is to resurface Bellbrook Avenue from Allison to Second. The project will complete the full rehabilitation of Bellbrook Avenue. So we're excited to finally have that done, at least through our corporate limits. The engineer's estimate for the project was three hundred and seventy-four thousand, excuse me, three hundred seventy-four thousand, one hundred twenty-four dollars and forty cents. We note that, unique to this CRRSA program, the city may first expend one hundred percent of the grant funds up to the maximum allotted amount of two hundred and thirty-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars. And then once expenditures reach that allotted limit, then the city's portion kicks in. So this is unique with this project that we get to spend all this federal dollars first and then we have anything beyond that. To advance the project, again, on Tuesday, February seventh, the city received four bids from qualified contractors to complete the project. Details again are included on all those bids in your, in your agenda report. But here again, John R. Jerkensen Company was the low bidder with a, again, with a solid track record. We have confidence in their abilities. Staff is recommending that council move forward with this contractor, request, request approval of the resolution to award the bid and execute a contract with John R. Jerkensen. Again, that amount is three hundred and fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars and fifty-seven cents to finish that roadway.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Councilman Branham, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by the mayor. Any discussion or questions from council members? I guess I'd just say, you know, once again, Chris, to you guys and you know, getting the applications for the grants and the timing of those things is, it's a lot of work. And making sure that the funding is coming at the appropriate times so that we can get the bids out and back in is, I mean, that's a, that's a, that's a, that's a, that's a very sequential but time-dependent process. So just kudos to your, your guys and Danette and for the folks and the other staff that have put this together. Just, just great work. A lot of us, we would not be able to move out on these projects if we did not have the, the matching grant funds. And as we mentioned before, the council had allocated some of the ARPA money to work on the streets. And fortunately, as we mentioned in the last item, as some of the costs have, have gone up here in the last couple of years in terms of asphalt costs and those types of things with inflation, we have those, those additional funds, which are one-time funds, but we have the funds available to, to cover any, any increase in the, in the, in the, in the projected cost versus the actual bids. So, good job for everyone with that. All right, let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Scrivens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Uh, Councilwoman Branham.
Aye.
Councilman Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Urschel.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item is Resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh one two, authorizing the purchase of Motorola portable radios and programming upgrades to the existing radios for the Fire and EMS Division and the Police Division under the current contract with P and R Communications. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, sir. On behalf of our Public Safety Divisions, this evening, we are requesting council's approval to begin the process of replacing the portable radios carried by our fighter, firefighters and police officers. The current radios utilized by the Safety Divisions were purchased in two thousand and seven or earlier and are absolutely in need of replacement and upgrade. The, um, the reality is, these are not cheap pieces of equipment and they're all coming due to be replaced at about the same time. But to try to reduce the burden of that, we tried to look at staging this or phasing this over a five-year period to take it in a little bit more affordable chunks and, and then of course we'll replace the more well-used pieces sequentially then. The new radios being requested are better products with both increased capabilities and security measures. The radios for both divisions will comply with new standards for encryption required by the state of Ohio. For the, the addition of Bluetooth to the existing radios that are not yet ready for replacement, but the subject of this contract will enable in-mass communications for all of our firefighters wearing the self-contained breathing apparatuses. So that's a nice enhancement. Total cost of this phase of equipment replacement is one hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. This has been in our budget and in our CIP. This would purchase twenty-eight APX six thousand X E ruggedized radios and twelve X E five hundred remote speakers microphones and allows us to upgrade thirty-one existing APX six thousand radios to Bluetooth-enabled with link layer authentication. I'd love to explain what all that means, but I don't know. These products are proprietary under Motorola. If you recall, when the city, all of our public safety agencies in the county switched over to the MARK system, that is under Motorola Projects, and so we have to replace Motorola equipment. P and R Communications is the regional service provider for, for Motorola projects. So this purchase would be made through P and R Communications through established best-price amounts for government services. And we are recommending that this be, the resolution be approved really as a, as a sole source award of bid because of proprietary and that is pursuant to section nine point zero eight B six of our charter. So again, recommending approval of this purchase of the radios through P and R Communications so that we can start that replacement process.
Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Moved by the mayor. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Councilman Branham. Any discussion or questions or comments from council before we vote on this?
Just one question.
Yes, Councilwoman Scrivens.
What's the expected lifetime of this equipment?
I think we're getting ten years?
Ten to fifteen years.
And is there aftermarket for the used equipment?
To some extent. Depends on the amount of use and damage. And, and I think probably the bigger challenge anymore is just the technology, the lag in technology. The half-life of these things has been reduced a lot because of technology.
So they become functionally obsolete.
Functionally obsolete. The other problem is the security measures, as we mentioned here. The, the need to encrypt these things and, you know, someone is always looking to undermine the system, so.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other comments? All right, let's call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brannan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item is, and this is the last item addition here to our agenda that are very critical, is Resolution 2023-013, waiving competitive bidding and accepting the cost proposal from John R. Jurgensen Company for emergency roadway repair on South Collier Street from East Main Street to East Second Street. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, sir. As I notified council previously in an email, earlier in February, our public service staff was alerted to a possible sinkhole developing on South Collier Street, again, between Main and Second. Upon inspection, it was clear that the roadway had been undermined due to deteriorating conditions, and it's a turn-of-the-century storm sewer that spans that entire block, so that's stacked brick, storm sewer, so that gives you some sense of how old it is. The area was subsequently coned off. We plated the area to ensure that it could remain passable safely. But it's clear that, that the sub-base needs to be reconstructed. We need to, we need to address this fairly urgently. We've had previous liability concerns here. We had a failure a few years ago, had some issues with that. So it's clear at this point that, that point repairs, we're not going to be effective. We really, we really need to replace the whole thing. This wasn't on our radar this year, but we think that it rises to the level of an emergency action rather than risking any further deterioration. Public Service was asked to develop a plan to pursue this replacement along the entire one-block section as soon as possible to that end. And in order to keep our costs as low as possible, city crews are planning to begin installing new storm sewer beginning next week, pending your approval tonight. As this roadway will need really immediate repair, staff believes it's in the best interest to move forward with lining up a contractor to resurface the street by waiving competitive bidding. We're able to get John R. Jurgensen essentially to honor their bid tools that they provided on prior projects that you approved this evening. They have asked for additional considerations for a mobilization fee as well as a maintenance of traffic fee of $3,000 and $5,000 respectively. These are pretty standard customary expenses, so that, that's quite reasonable. But we're thrilled that they would honor those quantity prices that they bid for other projects. As such, our engineering staff is estimating that the emergency roadway repair can be completed at a total cost of $118,986.66. We're recommending council approve Resolution 2023-13 this evening, in the interest of health, safety, and welfare of the city, and the guise of Section 9.08b6 of our charter. Again, allowing us to move forward with the competitive bidding of this and, and award a contract to John R. Jurgensen to get this done. Our intention, and we've already been communicating with the property owners along there, specifically the bank and the post office, our intention is to, to get this started next week. We had spoken with the post office, and I think this was a question that was posed by council, someone from council, posed the question of the option of moving those drop boxes. They declined that. They, as long as there's pedestrian access, they were fine with that. So folks complained that the, the drive-up access is limited. That really wasn't our decision, that was the postal service. But again, we'll try to minimize the disruption. It'll be an initial disruption as they close off the roadway to put the storm line replacement in. We will backfill that. It'll remain a rough surface for a period of time until such that John R. can come out and get the surface done. So at which point, that should be probably a one-day job to resurface that. So again, appreciate council's consideration of this, just trying to address this so there are no more issues there.
As this was a late addition, let's entertain any questions or discussion from council members before we take a motion for approval. Any, any questions from council members?
This is basically an emergency.
It is an emergency.
Mr. President, I should also add, there's no need for additional appropriation for this. I think I mentioned, there was mentioned in the agenda report that our Detroit Street project bid came in sufficiently underestimated based on what we had, you know, budgeted, that we can utilize resources, those resources to, to do this. So there's, there's no additional resources that need to be appropriated.
Thank you. All right, do I have a motion to approve the resolution? Moved by Councilman Scrivens, second? Second by Councilwoman Dean. Let's call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brannan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries, great. Now we have our appointed official reporter. Mr. Finance Director?
I have nothing for council this evening.
Thank you. Any questions for our finance director tonight?
I do. I just, just let people know, President Urschel, myself, Councilwoman Dean, we were in a meeting at 4:00 today for Budget and Finance Committee, and I just want to thank you for the report that you gave us. The prognosis is a little grim, but it's realistic with inflationary costs. So just, just want to let people know, your, your staff looks for every way to save and stretch your dollar. And it's, it's in the budget that we are doing what we can to maintain the level of service that we have right now, but it's getting harder and harder. As, as wages rise, as inflation continues to inch up, that dollar's spread pretty thin. And I'm not saying we're asking for more money right now. What I'm saying is we're doing our best we can to work with what we have. And that might be discussion of changing the way we do business a little bit, but I think you would concur with us that we can't operate on reserves forever. We're not at that point yet, but when we have to dip into reserves in the future, it's, that's pretty scary. So just, just keep things in mind. Our EMS and police, they're called quite frequently at an alarming rate. If it's domestic issue, that's one thing, but if it's violence, it's another. So part of it's a social issue, and we'll, we'll have to work on that later. But, you know, this is a hard discussion to have, but, you know, we're, we're in a, we're in a great community where most people play fair. For those that don't follow the rules, then we might ask you to play somewhere else, just put it that way.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for the finance director? Madam Law Director?
I just had one thing that I wanted to remind council of tonight and share with the public. We received notice of another opioid settlement. This one involving two of the manufacturers and three pharmacies, the pharmacies being CVS, Walgreens, and Walmart. There is a potential $17 billion that would be distributed among all the states that choose to participate in that settlement. Ohio has chosen to participate. So we, as a subdivision, can choose to participate in that. Final amount, I can't give you numbers. All the money will flow through One Ohio, which council has already approved the One Ohio MOU, and it will work much the same as One Ohio. What the final numbers are for our state and each participating subdivision within the state will depend on how many subdivisions actually participate. So I submitted the paperwork on Zinnia's behalf for us to participate in that settlement. When I have final numbers, I certainly will bring that back, so, so council knows.
If we chose not to participate and go on our own, then we would get nothing from that, and we would have to pursue our own individual litigation to obtain any of that.
Yes, and that would also reduce the amount the state of Ohio gets total.
Thank you. Any, any other questions for Madam Law Director here? All right. Mr. City Manager?
I haven't dominated enough time tonight, so I have a couple more.
That's okay, go ahead.
First, the city clerk is passing out. We have additional agenda item that I wanted to add under City Manager Reports because it came in as a request to me. I sent an email out later, late this afternoon to this effect, so if you didn't see that, I apologize. Council will recall, a few weeks back, I forwarded to you a request or recommendation from folks at Greencount Public Health requesting your endorsement and participation in the National Day of Unplugging, which is a, an attempt to get folks to put their phones down, put their devices down, and go out and connect with nature, connect with family, connect with other people. So in principle, this is a really positive thing. Several of you were interested in endorsing that. So we have drafted, with the city clerk's help, a proclamation. The mayor was in support of this. What I would recommend this evening, if you're okay with this proclamation, is a simple motion to endorse this. Then we would have, on behalf of the city, this would be sent as a proclamation from the mayor with council's endorsement. And again, that would just be a simple motion and a roll call this evening. The, the specific day is March 3rd, so that's why we're, we're handling this this evening. But again, I think in principle, this is a good thing, encouraging people to connect physically rather than connecting digitally. So if you have any questions, I can entertain that. If not, we would certainly suggest a motion to endorse the National Day of Unplugging.
And I'll mention that Brann had sent out notice to us about this previously, and this is really initiated by the, by the county health department. And what we're really seeking to do is to endorse this and support them. I just read a study in the Japanese society, 40% of young men have no social contact.
No one's the population's decline.
Yeah, there's less, it's hard to preoccupy, there are no social contact, but it's.
That was social contact.
That's right, that's right. But, but it's a malice, right? It is. And God did not create us to be living in complete isolation of each other. So I know from my own grandkids, there's just times to say, we're turning the TV off, we're turning all the digital whatever, we're going to play a board game, we're going to go outside and play some ball. And unfortunately, that's how, that's all you used to do, right? But now, you, you have to make an effort to do that. So, so we encourage all of us, our individual families, to, the only thing about this day of taking time and interacting with your spouse. Go for a walk, right? Go for a bike ride. Spend some time talking about something, just don't sit and watch a show together, right? And the same thing with your kids, right? Turn off those devices. And it's going to be hard, because maybe that hasn't been the way you've been doing business, right? But it'll, it'll be, it'll be beneficial, so, yeah. And Mary, you want to say anything else here? Yeah, why don't you go ahead and read the proclamation for us?
Sure.
Sure.
That's what she does.
That's what I do. Be a complaint. This is going to step on all of our toes, so just settle in, everybody. Whereas the first Friday in March is designated as the National Day of Unplugging, which kicks off the 24-hour period from sundown to sundown to unplug, unwind, relax, and do things other than use technology, electronics, and social media. And whereas research shows that 47% of Americans are addicted to their phones, with the average person checking his or her phone every 12 minutes, or approximately 80 times per day. And 55% of Americans between the ages of 23 and 38 years old are addicted to social media. And whereas the city of Zinnia wishes to join in the effort to encourage everyone to disconnect or unplug from all digital traffic, including cell phones, tablets, computers, televisions, and gaming devices on Friday, March 3rd, 2023. And whereas the city of Zinnia encourages everyone to get outside and enjoy the sounds and smells of nature, engage with one another in uninterrupted face-to-face conversations, or to just enjoy the silence of no digital distractions. And whereas the city of Zinnia encourages everyone to observe this day, or at minimum just a few hours, of unplugging and to recognize the negative effects that overuse of digital devices has on our mental health and well-being. Now therefore, I, Sarah J. Mays, Mayor of the City of Zinnia, Ohio, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim Friday, March 3rd, 2023, as National Day of Unplugging in the city of Zinnia, and ask that you join me in unplugging for the day to allow a digital reset and make more human connections with the people around us. That is if we do vote to endorse this.
Great. So, a motion?
I'll vote yes, because the guy needs to take his girlfriend on a date.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dean, do I have a second here?
I'll second.
Second from the mayor. Very good. Let's go ahead and take a vote on that.
Seconding the motion on a date.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's have discussion, yes, Councilman Scrivens, please, go ahead.
I noticed that radio was not included, thank God, because I'm not going to give up NPR.
Well, I don't know. Is that an analog signal or a digital signal?
At 5:30 in the morning, I got to have NPR.
I'll go scratch it and go to.
And then at night, I got to have the BBC, so, at midnight, so.
What's that, what's that radio?
In terms of, I'm glad you didn't include radio in this proclamation, so.
I didn't add radio.
Now, I'm going to make a, I'm going to say, if you vote yes on this, we're going to, we're going to get a report back from you at the next council meeting, how it went.
I'm completely fine with ignoring work, so this works out.
Yeah, we're not going to have the, our staff vote on this, so that they can.
You're not voting, they're voting.
That's right, all right.
It is our children's birthday.
It is.
Council President, I will say, my wife and I done this, and it was not 100% full day, but we did it for like 9:00 AM until about 9:00 PM. Warn people that you're doing this, because, you know, of course, my wife was pregnant, and next thing you know, she's got text messages wondering what's going on. I've got text messages, like what's, you know, what's going on, and, you know, we literally disconnected, and we, we looked at it, and we're like, 9:00 o'clock that night, like, oh, well, sorry, people, we didn't have a kid, you know, kind of thing, so. But just, just to forewarn those people that are really addicted to, to warn those friends.
Yeah, yeah. The silence there will be deafening, right?
Yeah.
All right, any comments? Let's call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brannan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
In ironic words, we'll be promoting this on our website and social media, so.
Very good.
Two other quick items. First of all, I want to let council know that we are preparing a sort of first report on the status of implementation of our building inspection efforts. I want to thank the Assistant City Manager, City Planner, and others who have been instrumental in facilitating that, and we're off to a good running start. You know, that, the race happens to have a couple hurdles in it, but we've gotten over those and addressing things, so I'll be providing you with a memo to that effect. Also working on a couple of updates related to some public safety matters. Principally, we've had some further discussion and shared this a little bit with our Public Safety Committee earlier this week. Some thoughts in, in terms of recommendations for facility issues dealing with the Fire Division and the potential for replacement of Fire Station 32. So again, sharing via memo coming very soon to a mailbox near you. So with that, that is all I have this evening.
Great, thank you. Any, any questions for the City Manager? Thank you.
Pleasure.
All right, let's go to council comments and reports. Councilwoman Dean?
Nothing done.
Thank you. Councilwoman Brannan?
On Tuesday, I filled in for Rebecca at Public Safety Meeting. I'll let the chair fill you in on all the details on that. Yesterday, we met with the next plan, and that was a nice meeting that Brian put on to kind of give us the feedback of what the survey had revealed of all of our residents. That survey is still technically open for a little bit more, a little bit more time, so recommend anybody looking to fill that out to, to look at our Facebook page. And also just want to congratulate Gary Johnson on his retirement at 35 years.
How many years for Gary?
35.
35 years, right.
That's it.
Great. Councilman Scrivens?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple items. The Public Safety Committee met this past week, and one of the major things we talked about was the construction of Fire Station 32. Come hair, blood, high water, or mud, one day, we're going to get started on constructing the fire station. And every day that we wait, we are actually hustling backwards, we're losing money. Yellow Springs put up a five-bay fire station with all the associated equipment, and they associated equipment, and they did it for five million. We've got our estimate down, which is three bays, and it's eight million. So every day that we don't get started, and then plus the economic environment, is slowing us down. So everything that's acting is militating against us building this Station 32. We also talked about the SAFER grants. We have Deputy Chief Bogan here, and he's the expert in this. And I'd just ask him to give us a two-minute prezo, if he could, on basically what we did. We have the Chief Police here, and his guys are pretty much good to go. But the fire station guys are getting new radios, they're getting a SAFER grant. So can you educate the public a little bit, please, sir?
Yeah, we requested through, to the Public Safety Committee to submit an application for a grant. It's a FEMA grant for SAFER. It's the same grant that we submitted last year to add an additional six firefighters to our roster. It would equate to about $2.2 million over the course of three years.
Years.
If we were awarded, we were favorably viewed in this last year's grant. We just not scored high enough to be in the funding levels. So we're going to revise our narratives and try again. So if we would be awarded, we would come back to council for approval to accept that grant at a later date.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. And also, Mr. President, participated today in a, with Councilman Smith in a chili cook-off. And that was at the Legacy Village. And that was excellent. I just enjoy meeting the senior citizens. They're the pillars of the community that we kind of look past. And just wanted to say that we have condolences to the family of Mr. Ricky Bayless. I see his brother's here. And that's why he's here, because he came back for his brother. We appreciate that. And hate to see Dr. Pam Callahan step down from the Board of Education. She was a good addition. But now we have an opening on the Zinnia Community Schools Board of Education.
Right.
So some person, please, step up. And then finally, Mr. President, I want to thank Gary Johnson for 35 years. That's about as old as some people I know.
I'm 24.
I want to thank him for his dedicated service to the city. And hopefully, we'll be able to keep him around for a few things. So just want to thank him for his service and going issue. And with that, Mr. President, you go back.
I'm like 24, guys.
All right. Thank you so much. Councilwoman Dean?
I don't have anything further to ask, Mr. President. Thank you.
All right. Vice President Smith?
All right. So just to reiterate what Councilman Scrivens said, we were really fortunate to be invited to Legacy Village. It's the first time they ever did a chili cook-off between their employees. The winner of it got a day off with pay. And so...
And a ribbon.
And it was, I believe, the chili number seven or six?
I think it was six.
Yeah, yeah. We voted for it, but it wasn't our favorite. But unlike the little spicy...
Ours kind of went third, the one that we liked coming in first.
But we weren't collaborating to, you know, rig it or anything like that. But we enjoyed it, and they had three other judges. So one was a resident, one was visiting, and the other was an employee there. So we had a good time. And again, thanks to Finance and Budget Committee for meeting today. One of the things that was, is going to come back to council, is the council priorities. So look for a workshop probably here in the next couple of months for us. Of course, we met in January at our retreat in Discuss Streets. But we do have some other things that we have to peg as far as priorities and that type of thing. So look for that. And, you know, thank you to Larry Dillon and our city staff for moving forward with Zinnia Town Square. You know, this was a topic four years ago, and our city staff and council, we took a risk. And there's risk is still there. We are up against a lot of economic challenges right now with labor shortages and supply shortages and inflation to move forward with Zinnia Town Square. But it is progressing, maybe at a snail's pace, because actually, that's kind of how government moves. Government moves kind of slow. We have to make sure that we do it right, and we don't have to it. And so as you see progress there, be patient. When you see, you probably see people that have been surveying there. So, you know, it's coming to fruition. It's just going to take a little while. And we appreciate everybody's patience and, you know, and your prayers to make sure that this happens correctly. Other than that, thank you very much.
Thank you. And Mayor?
Thank you, sir. The last meeting, I actually did not mention, and I apologize, I forgot to mention that the expert group met on February 7th. And we had a really good discussion. We have a lot of upcoming events, and I wanted to highlight a few. The next big one is the Annual Easter Egg Hunt. It's very far away, so don't worry. These will be going home to all the kids in school. They'll have information about this. But the Easter Egg Hunt is actually on April 8th. It's always the Saturday before Easter. So we have about 10,000-plus eggs that'll be all over Shawnee Park. And you can come and register at 10 o'clock. You get it from 10 to 11. You can do a registration. And the registration is just to get a basket, a possible raffle. My goodness, I could not look at the word.
Raffle, right, right.
We raffle off Easter baskets, so if you want to be a part of that.
About how many?
We usually have in the neighborhood of about 40-plus baskets that we give away. So if you're a business or an individual that is interested in donating an Easter basket, please let us know. You can contact the city. You can contact myself. But we would love to have more baskets that we can give away to kids. And I can give you any details that you are, that you'd like to know about that. The Home Church also, last year they did this, and we're going to do it again, a helicopter egg drop at 10:30. So it is a limited amount of eggs, and it's kind of a crazy moment, all the kids going for it. But there is then the other Easter egg hunts. We have five different hunts, from a hunt with four kids with special needs. It's off a little more. It's a kind of a quieter area. Babies, toddlers, five- to eight-year-olds, and nine- to 12-year-olds. So we invite you to come out. Those begin at 11:00. And we do a staggered start, so that parents, if you have kids in multiple age groups, will get you to the different places on time. A couple other things coming up. We've got Adopt a Spot coming downtown Bloom of Zinnia. If you've seen our big planters in town, you can be a part of taking care of those. A lot of businesses do that with their planter in front of their business, but we love for individuals to do that as well. So again, if you're interested, contact our city clerk. We can help you get started with that. We've got the Spring Fling coming up on April 29th. That is a great day downtown, arts and crafts, all kinds of things that happen. We tie that in with Arbor Day. There's a tree that's going to be planted the day before, on the 28th, Tecumseh. The Tree Committee does that, and they pick different schools to plant a tree in. But on the 29th, the Spring Fling, there will also be a seedling giveaway at Devil Winds, which is indeed a fundraiser. So come out to that, enjoy the day, end the day at Devil Winds. It's a lot of fun. We have a summer concert series coming up with the Green County Adult Band. They're going to be playing at Shawnee Park again this summer. We haven't done that in quite a few years. And really excited to have that going again. That'll be in June, June 18th, July 16th, and August 13th. As Councilman Branham mentioned, the Next Plan Group met yesterday, and he mentioned the survey. It's on Facebook, but it's also still on the survey, if you're interested in filling it out. It's also on our city website. So please take time to do that. If you go onto our website, you can let your voice be heard of what things that you want to see in the next few years happen in Zinnia and things that you think are important here. So we have some good responses. We would love a few more, and that'll be open for a few more weeks. And then I wanted to congratulate, there is a group of new Eagle Scouts here in Zinnia. I just wanted to mention them by name and congratulate them. Andrew Blackman, Troop 85, Justin Eason, Troop 75, Connor Flanagan, Troop 375, Andrew Kettleson, Troop 42, Clayton Lipinski, Troop 68, and Justice Long, Troop 140. And these are all Zinnia citizens that this coming Sunday will officially be Eagle Scouts. So we congratulate you, and great job. I will be attending Gary Johnson's retirement gathering tomorrow, and excited to be able to congratulate him personally. But of course, let us stay on the record as well, that we are very thankful for him. He is an outstanding person, and congratulations to him. That is all I have, sir.
Thank you. It's about 1% of scouts become Eagle Scouts. So that's quite the achievement for those young men. So good stuff. We had the Public Utilities Commission, our committee met this last week, and we approved our... So there will be some rate, I just want to let folks know, there'll be some rate increases coming to Public Utilities. We've approved our new contract with Runkie for trash collection, but that included some rate increases over the next couple of years. So we're working on how that will roll out to the community. We also are looking at some other items that you normally get billed with on your utility bill in terms of water costs and sewer costs with that. We also went over the status of our new stormwater assessment methodology and the engineering firm that's helping us look at setting that up by hard-packed ground by residences and businesses, so that we have a more proportional share in that, and collecting some funds to actually get in a longer-term maintenance strategy for our stormwater removal. And once again, if you can't get the water off the roads, you're going to damage the streets. That's just a fact of life. And so we, in addition to other safety concerns, property damage concerns, those types of things. So more to come in the future, but good discussion. Once again, I just want to thank staff for all the hard work there. Chris for your guys, and Ryan for your guys, and just able to answer all of our questions and keep us up to speed. Hard things to address, infrastructure, you know, and funding for that. But I think we're getting the information we need to be able to press forward on that. So, yep. I told council, thank you for allowing me to miss the last meeting. My mother was in the last hours of her life and passed away a few hours after our last council meeting, but had a good evening of spending some time with her there. And just time of prayer with her, and just a peaceful time for that as well, too. So thank you for that. She was a long-term resident out at Legacy Village. And if she'd been alive, she probably would have been there at the chili cook-off that you guys went to today. But anyway, so thanks for letting me have that time with my mom last council meeting. And just to end our evening, I just want to make a statement here. Last month, I attended a public meeting where I made comments using the word "we" on topics that implied that I was representing the city and the city council on these issues. As an individual council member, I do not and cannot represent the city or council on matters that the council has not approved or passed by a majority vote of the council. None of the items I discussed at this meeting had such backing of council, nor had there been any discussions of council on these topics. Further, I want to be clear, the council did not play any role in the decision to file charges in the criminal case, and the council does not play a role in the criminal justice process. I just want to give my apologies to my fellow council members and to the city staff for implying that the city and the council had such positions on these topics. So I thank you for the grace of my fellow council members there. So I just want to extend my sincere apology to all of you. Good. All right. No further comments. Thank you so much, everyone, for tonight. And a motion for adjournment?
Are we going to new executive session?
There is not, there's not a need for executive session for this evening. So that, yes, we will not be going to executive sessions tonight.
So moved.
So moved by the mayor, second?
Just get out here.
Second from Councilman Scrivens. All right. Let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.